Good to go? Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely sounds a lot better. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Councilman Alexander Thomas. Tonight, um, it's Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. I have the privilege and honor to call tonight's public hearing to order. Uh, this public hearing is broadcasting live on HPA TV, which can be found on Xfinity Channel ninety-six and Frontier Government Channel sixty-three-two. It will also be streamed via HPATV.org and the HPA Facebook page and various other popular streaming services and also on HPA TV's YouTube page as well. Uh, before we begin, I do have some housekeeping rules that I am required to read. Um, this public hearing will be conducted in accordance with the following procedures. Each person wishing to address the council or members thereof shall upon recognition by the presiding officer, which today is me, um, give his or her name, address, and if he or she represents a group and shall in addition state for the record the name and address of such said group or organization and shall limit his or her remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof, and any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or who become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forewith barred by the presiding officer from further audience at this meeting unless permission to remain is granted by two-thirds vote of the council members present. During the public hearing, there shall be no debate by the council, um, although questions may be asked by the council of persons making such presentations. Um, I don't know if we have any other council members present. Not able to see on the screen, but does not look like that. Um, but, uh, all right. Uh, we do have two agendas on tonight's, uh, um, uh, two agenda items this evening. Uh, the first one being Agenda Item two-point-one, Mayor Arampa Lompom, uh, with accompanying resolution authorizing the submission of community programs eligible for the twenty-twenty-five Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program, um, also known as the NAA. Um, and we have the pleasure of having Damaris Diaz with us to make a presentation, if you would like to.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Damaris Diaz and I work for the City of Hartford's Management and Budget Office, and I am the liaison for the Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. So the Neighborhood Assistance Act, we're gonna go through the overview, the eligible programs, the application and funding process, the timeline, and then answer any questions if you have any. The Neighborhood Assistance Act is the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services Tax Credit Program intended to insensitize, insensitize, sorry, contributions by business entities to nonprofit organizations. Participating municipalities are required by state law to manage and oversee the local process. This is not a grant program. Funds for the proposed projects are solicited by participating nonprofit organizations from corporate donors. Tax credits are authorized by the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services. Eligible programs, um, energy conservation, comprehensive college access, loan forgiveness, neighborhood assistance, job training, education, community services, crime prevention, construction or rehabilitation of dwelling units for families of low and moderate income, donation of money to an open space acquisition fund, child daycare facilities, childcare services, employment and training programs directed at disabled persons, employment and training programs for workers who are fifty years of age or older, education and employment for TAF recipients and community-based alcoholism prevention and treatment. The NAA application and funding process. Tax-exempt organizations complete the Form NAA dash zero-one and submit it to the City of Hartford Office of Management and Budget and Grants. This fiscal year, the NAA dash zero-one form was due on Friday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Proposals are subject to public hearing and approved by the Court of Common Council. Once approved, the city submits the, submits to the Connecticut DRS on or before July first, twenty twenty-five. By September fifteenth of each year by statute, the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services will issue a list of NAA programs that are eligible to solicit NAA donations and indicate approving, approved funding limits. Business entities are eligible to receive tax credits for eligible contributions to participating tax-exempt organizations. contributors complete the Form NAA dash zero-two for each cash contribution made to an eligible entity. This fiscal year, NAA dash zero-two must be sent to the Connecticut DRS between September fifteenth to October first, twenty twenty-five. The Connecticut Department of Revenue Services will then issue an NAA program approval letter to business firms that make a qualifying contribution. This fiscal year, the annual cap on total tax credit statewide is five million. A contributing business is limited to receiving a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in tax credits annually. However, it is likely that the credits applied for will far exceed the reduced cap. In its review, other applications received throughout the State of Connecticut DRS will prorate the credits available among approved organizations. This fiscal year, we've received forty-nine applications from eligible nonprofit organizations for projects totaling, totaling five-point-two million dollars. And then this is just the timeline going through what I just said. If you have any questions?
No, I, I personally don't have any questions. So thank you so much, uh, for your presentation and, um, thank you for the document too, giving me a hard copy. Appreciate it. Um, I don't know if, yeah, I don't think the public's able to ask questions right now during this. Um, but, um, so next up, uh, we can get into actual, like, the public hearing. Um, and so is there anyone present here? Uh, looks like everyone's gonna be on Zoom, but is anyone, is there anyone present on Zoom uh, wishing to speak on behalf of, uh, this agenda item, I, item two-point-one? Um, I know we had some, few people sign up. Um, I don't have a list. I, I don't have a list of who would be first. Donna, okay. So, uh, the first person would be Donna Swar. Ms. Donna?
Hi, um, I'm here to speak about the, uh, changes in the proposed parking ordinance.
Okay, um, hold on one second, Ms. Donna. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I thought, it's okay.
Yeah, so let me actually just read both agenda items then, and then we could get into public hearing. Um, uh, so hold on one second. So we have two agenda items, so two-point-one, which I read earlier, and then Ms. Diaz made her presentation, but we also have Agenda Item number two-point, two-point-two, which is Mayor Arampa Lompom, uh, with accompanying ordinance amend, amendments to ensure no vehicles park on the grass at city-owned parks and green spaces. Um, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware because that's what Ms. Donna has come here to speak about, and so we just wanna make sure everyone understands the agenda at hand. You may continue, Ms. Donna. Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you. Um, I submitted a document, um, and I'm hoping that the other, uh, city council members are gonna have an opportunity to read it. Um, my name is Donna Swar. I'm with the Colt Park Foundation. I'm a board member. Colt Park has suffered for years due to these two issues that the ordinance is going to address, um, parking on the grass and parking in non-parking areas. Uh, we are in favor of the changes. Um, deep roots in the lawns and areas which are supposed to be used for playing and recreating occurs due to parking on the grass. Millions of dollars have been spent improving Colt Park, and these improvements are being damaged and destroyed. Parking on the grass has led to, um, the, the responsible for killing of new and old trees. A majority of tree's roots grow horizontally in just a few top feet of soil. These roots are crucial for absorbing water and nutrients, and they also help anchor a tree. Parking vehicles on top of these trees, um, are killing the roots, and many times the branches get damaged, and this invites fungal infections, bacterial diseases, and insect infestations. Each new tree costs two thousand dollars. This includes, includes the cost of the tree, the planting, and two years' worth of maintenance. Just this past week, a league allowed the parents to park within the park where grass was newly planted and is now destroyed. There are images below in my document. This was around the recently refurbished pavilion where a new flat pavement and two food truck beds had been installed. This was just sickening. After all the money and time spent to get this area screwed up, it was ruined by thoughtless, selfish people. This league has been told for the past three to four years to tell parents to park in the parking lot, not in the park. Every spring, the rules are clearly shared with those who seek athletic permits, but they've chosen to ignore them. Another issue to those who have chosen to park in the park is the use of the interior road. This road is intended to be used by pedestrians, bikes, and park maintenance vehicles. These cars travel along this interior road, uh, at an unsafe speed, and it's very dangerous for people who are in the park. A new entrance is going to be built, um, this, the end of the fall, which will help a little bit, um, but honestly, um, if they find another way in, they will just continue to do it. Uh, so we do need enforcement. At the curve of the, in, the road going into Colt Park, which is off of Weathersfield Avenue, it takes a really sharp right-hand turn. And along that section of the street, um, people are allowed to park on the left-hand side, and that is because that is the direction in which most people would be headed. They're going down to the playground. The problem is that people keep parking on both sides of the road, which makes it incredibly tight for any vehicle to get through, but also impossible for an emergency vehicle to get through. I have been there and witnessed this many times, but the one eyewitness that stands out the most to me is on a Sunday morning, I was attending yoga in the park. A fire truck came into the park and was unable to get through that area. They had to continuously blast their horn to get people's attention to move their vehicles. Whomever required medical care did not receive it in a timely manner. This was a deeply disturbing experience, and I don't know what happened. The next section of the road that is an issue is where the parking lot is. Uh, people again park on both sides of the, the road. The parking lot veers off to the left, but the road goes straight out to Warmie. And quite frankly, once that gets blocked up, people can't even get into Colt Park. It is completely locked up, and it starts spilling out onto Weathersfield Avenue. And then people try to get in by driving around and trying to go in the exit on Warmie Avenue. We have a huge problem in the parking lot. We have illegal vending. It takes up additional parking spots. We're hoping that the ordinance will help address this issue as well. There is additional parking along Warmie Avenue for park visitors, so there is parking available. The other area for people to park to recreate in Colt Park is the lot between Colt Park and Dillon Stadium. I have to constantly remind government officials that both of these parking lots, or sorry, this parking lot is part of Colt Park. It needs to remain open during the summer. Any Sunday, we have between two and four thousand people in the park. These are HPD numbers, not my own. I do realize that there will be pushback from those who receive tickets and are fined. Colt Park has been working with HPD and HPA to ensure the safety of Colt Park visitors for years. Without this ordinance, public safety will continue to be an issue, and it would be a shame not to do everything we can do to provide it. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you so much, Ms. Donna. I appreciate your dedication to Colt Park and, um, to our city at large. I appreciate you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, Ms. Angela Harris, um, from Phillips.
Ms. Harris?
Ms. Harris, is Ms. Harris with us? Thought I saw her on.
Yes, I am, um, just getting access to share screen. So, and Mr. Fred Phillips, um, we're gonna actually tan, tag team two presentations.
Sure.
And to save time, if we can start out with the, um, Phillips project, he can talk about it, and I will share screen, and then we'll go to the Idaby Wells project.
Yes, we're working on getting you, uh, share screen access.
Okay, on the, um, on the Phillips project, you know, the first thing we have on the list is to replace, uh, the air conditioning unit that's, um, antiquated and, uh, has its own habits of when it wants to work or not. And secondly, the, uh, the roofing issue. We have, um, several, several leaks that come from time to time, and we'd like to work on getting something to replace, uh, the roofs, not only at, at twenty-five-fifty, but the property also at, at twenty-five, uh, a hundred Main Street.
And through you, Mr. Chair, um, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, this is the church facility, twenty-five-hundred Main Street. Are you seeing the screen?
Y- yes, we're working on it, yeah, just to get it all, yeah. I can see it, yes.
Okay, so, um, just going back, we are seeking the full one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, um, for this fiscal year, uh, the twenty-twenty-five, um, program cycle, and it is to deal with the energy conservation at the twenty-five-hundred, um, Main Street facility as well as the twenty-five-fifty, um, Phillips Health Center. Um, we'll be looking at phasing in the replacement of, um, HVAC equipment, both on the ground level on the outside as well as inside on both properties. And as you know, the Phillips Health Center houses multiple, um, nonprofit organizations, uh, including Hartford Communities That Care, Mothers United Against Violence, um, the, uh, Mohammed Mas, number fourteen, um, and we would, um, appreciate the opportunity to maintain affordable rents for our nonprofit agencies. Um, the structure was built back in nineteen-sixties, and, um, we acquired it in nineteen-ninety-six. Um, some of the units are past their useful life, and we will be replacing them, um, in a phased-in basis over the course of the next few years. So you'll be seeing us again, um, on a consecutive years for the same project as we work through the replacement of this equipment.
Just wanna, I just wanna add the elevators as well, Angela.
Right, but this particular funding is specific to energy conservation. So, um, the eligible projects are the HVAC equipment and, um, any, um, uh, lighting, uh, efficiency, um, upgrades. So, um, next, we have the Phillips, uh, lot that is, um, south of the church building, and we use that, um, we offer that up to the community for off-street parking during the winter months as we wait for it to be developed. Um, and so it is currently, um, unlit, and so for public safety, we will be looking to add, um, lighting off of the building to project to the parking area. So people remain s- safe during the wintertime when it actually gets dark a lot earlier. And that is the, um, church building. And if you give me a moment, I will switch over to the second project, the Idaby Wells apartment, um, for our second presentation. And if you would like someone else to go, um, in the meantime, or I could switch.
I could start talking about it while you, while you're switching up, Angela.
Okay.
Um, the, um, property, uh, Idaby Wells, which is our senior, uh, complex that houses up to forty, uh, senior citizens from the greater Hartford area, um, we, we want to replace also that, their, their air conditioning unit, uh, which is faulty. Uh, and in the mechanical rooms, we have two furnaces, two hot water heaters that we would like to replace as they are antiquated. Um, and also replace the single-speed heat. And also replace the single-speed heat and exchanger with a variable heat exchanger so that we can, you know, keep the residents warm during the winter and without failure of the heating system blinking out.
And so here you have the property at 100 Coventry Street. Thank you, Fred. And that energy conservation project, we are also seeking the $150,000, the ability to raise that through tax credits through local Connecticut businesses. And here you have the exterior air conditioning unit in the back of the building as well as equipment in the mechanical room inside the building. As Fred mentioned, the two furnaces, everything is redundant. So we would fix one and keep one online while the other's being repaired so we always have hot water and heat for our residents. And here you have the single-speed heat exchangers that he referenced that we will swap out for the higher-efficiency variable-speed heat exchangers. And in the middle, you have the two water heaters that will be replaced. This building opened in 2005, and we will be celebrating 20 years of operations this October. So it is time for most of the equipment to be turned over to maintain quality heat, hot water, and air conditioning for our senior saints. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer. We look forward to the opportunity to pursue these funds and look forward to receiving full support from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Angela and Brother Fred. I do have two quick questions. Well, first I'll say congratulations to you guys on 20 years. That's amazing. But my other question is going to be, how many residents are in the Ida B. Wells property?
Forty.
Sure, there are 40 units. I believe we might have a couple or two that are, instead of just single individuals, that are couples living together. But there are 40 single-bedroom apartments in the building.
Awesome. My question was, my next question was going to be, so when we talk about the Phillips Project, you had said that for multiple years that you guys would most likely be applying because you guys are working through this project. Is that similar for the Ida B. Wells property as well? Or is this?
Yes, it should take several rounds to get everything turned over.
Got it. Well, then my question, my question then would be, like, in regards to how much, like, how many years do you think it would take for the full project? Like, I feel like this presentation's probably like a more, like, there's probably more parts to this presentation. And like, you just kind of showed us, like, the piece for this, like, you know, for the energy conservation. And so I kind of wanted to maybe, like, you know, if you guys could show or let us know about, like, you know, the other parts of this project because, you know, sometimes there's other funding sources that, you know, that can come across, and we would love to, you know, for you guys to apply or if we can help out, you know, in that regard with other stuff, too.
Sure, we would always love to get some of the roof shored up at both buildings to make sure that there aren't any leaks. So that's definitely something that we would be happy to pursue and provide information for. If you are aware of grant funding for that, absolutely. This particular program is very stringent upon what is eligible as an expense as the staff shared earlier. So we've aligned the specific projects based on the eligibility. But there continues to be work done every year on even paving our parking lot, right? Different things like that that need to be done to keep the infrastructure sound and keep hazardous conditions for people, you know, tripping and falling during the winter months. So, yes, we would be happy to present a fuller package if you would be interested, absolutely.
Yeah, I would love to, yeah, I would love to. And love to just hear about some of the work that you guys are doing, you know. I was at, you know, 2550 the other day for the Community Safety Summit, and it felt like all of Hartford, or should I say all the north end was in the room. And, you know, it was beautiful. And somebody said something to me that I've shared with a few other people, but they said that the real work, what do they say? Like, community really happens, or the work really happens in 2550, and I don't care what they're doing over there at 550. And, you know, I done shared that with a few people in City Hall. They done got mad about it, but, you know, it is what it is sometimes.
Tell them, don't get mad, get involved.
Don't get mad, get involved. I appreciate that. Hey, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'd love to connect with you guys about some of that work that Phillips is doing, you know, probably offline with you guys. Next up.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you so much. And then next up, we do have Reverend Courtney Adams signed up, also from Phillips, the senior pastor of Phillips.
Yes, and through you, Mr. Chair, he is unavailable on today.
Sure.
So we've covered it for him. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, guys. I think you guys did an awesome, awesome job stepping in for the brother's senior pastor. If there's anyone else present that would like to speak about any of these agenda items? No?
May I speak? This is Katie Powers.
Yeah, of course, Ms. Katie.
Hi, I'm Katie Powers, and I'm representing Hartford Youth Scholars. I'm their advancement director. And really, my message tonight was to come on. We've applied for NAA, and this is our second year. Last year, we were approved with $150,000, and we got 75 of it, which was a huge win for us. It was our first year ever doing this. And we're applying again this year, and we're really excited and really just on here to express our gratitude for the monies. They make life-changing addition funds for our organization. We serve kids from Hartford, starting in 7th grade, getting them to and through college. We're 20 years old this year as well, and we're really grateful to have received these monies and really excited to hopefully be approved again this year. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Ms. Katie, for the work that you guys do at the Hartford Youth Scholars. Truly, truly amazing work, and congratulations on 20 years to you guys, too.
Thank you so much.
It seems like just another day, you know?
I know.
Guys were starting to do stuff, so, you know, 20 years, yeah. You know, time flies when you're having fun and doing amazing things for the community.
Doing good work.
Yeah, time flies when you're doing good work. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak on these agenda items? Anyone else present that would like to speak on these agenda items? And this is the last call. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on these agenda items? No? Okay. I do have to make one announcement before I leave, before we all leave. So we are going to be having another public hearing. It's going to be a special public hearing. It's going to be to speak about the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit, so the NAA program that we were just speaking about. We're going to be having another public hearing, and there's going to be hopefully some more council members present at that meeting. So please, I would love to see all you guys here and then, you know, to speak, and I'm sure some other nonprofits will be there as well. That meeting is going to be happening on June 11 at 7:00 p.m., and that's going to be fully virtual. That's going to be fully virtual. So the Zoom information will be online, and you can sign up to speak, same way you guys did today. And, yeah, I would love to see all you guys here. Once again, it is Wednesday, June 11 at 7:00 p.m., once again, fully virtual. If that is it, I'm going to be calling this meeting adjourned, and I'll pick up this hammer and knock it, and I'll see all you guys here on the 11th. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you so much.